Let's call the April 2nd meeting of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Steele, will you call the roll?
Mr. Gibson is absent. Dr. Orth?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Nakosha?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Would you all please join me in the invocation by Pastor Jack Smith of New Life Ministry Center?
It's always an honor to be asked to pray. Today was a tough day. My whale went out this morning, so I've been working on it all day. It came on, I got to shower, but I didn't get to shave because it went out again. And I thought about what you folks have to face, day after day, month after month. The problems, the situations, there's politics, but the big thing is you've got a lot on you. And so I want to think about that as we pray. Lord, we do thank you and we praise you for all that you're doing. We thank you for this great county. God, I pray to just bless it and anoint it. Lord, I pray to put your hand upon every one of these here tonight. Lord, these supervisors, God, I pray, give them wisdom, give them discernment, give them understanding and knowledge, Lord, that they will make the right decisions for you, the right decisions for the people of this great county. I pray tonight, oh God, to just bless them, strengthen them, watch over them, protect them. Lord, we thank you for this nation, but Father, this county is where we live. I thank you, Holy God, for all that you're doing. I pray to bless them now, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
And now I'd like Petsworth Elementary's 4th grader, Logan Taylor, to come up and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Logan. Logan? I know a few of those Logans. Next item is approval of the minutes, October 17th and November 8th. All in favor? Next item is adoption of the agenda. All in favor? Next item is approval of the consent agenda. All in favor? Next item is matters presented by the board. Mr. Crisco.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Just to make my fellow board members aware at our next meeting, I'll be able to provide an update as the MPA will actually meet for the first time in several years tomorrow night.
Very good. Dr. Orth?
Yeah, a couple of things. Do we know if the attorney signed off that consent, that order to stop and desist the work on the Carvers Creek solar area?
I think it would be more appropriate, you can give the latest.
I spoke with Kevin Landry, who's the Director of Environmental Programs, or Ann Ducey Ortiz is, and he's under him. No, they've issued a third notice to comply because upon research, it was revealed that, of course, they'd been given two notices to comply. One was in January and one was in February. And ninety to a hundred percent of the items cited in those notices to comply have been remedied. So they have more things they need to do to come into compliance. So the decision was made by Mr. Landry to give them a third notice to comply with the new laundry list of items which they need to remediate. So that's my understanding of where we are. So my understanding is that it, there will not be a stop work order issued, at least imminently.
Does this remediation go to include those ponds that are distant from the property itself that we understand are rarely muddied?
That's my understanding, yes, sir. That, that, that the work that needs to be done on the sites will be such that it would not contribute to polluting downhill ponds and streams.
Okay, okay. Just as a comment, I guess I was a little very disappointed by what I read from Mr. Landry and the fact that this was the very first solar farm that we approved and we bent over backwards to make this happen to this company. And to hear what's happening to that environment is very disappointing. And I'm hoping that, you know, we will keep their feet to the fire, you know, from this point on.
My understanding is that this was a by right.
But we did help a number of things too.
So after that, it became more a CUP. So you have a couple of those that you've attached to CUP with terms and conditions. But before we could close the door, the fox had gotten in and they developed it by right. So they're allowed to do that. So we can't use the conditions attendant to a CUP because they don't have a CUP.
I know, we did something at the 11th hour to help them out, right? That was, yeah.
Who has, who has privy to a contract here? Do we have a contract with them?
No, sir. We didn't.
So we're acting as an outside agent?
Well, yes and no. It's not a CUP, it's not a conditionally used permit. It's, it was at the time zoned by right for a solar farm of this size. But they are, they are required to comply with our erosion and sediment control ordinance and our stormwater management ordinance. So we don't have a private contract with them, but they're required to abide by all our ordinances.
I think one of the differences too is the terrain there versus the terrain at the other location. The first one is much flatter, this one's much hillier, and they had terrible weather in addition to what may have been some labor decisions.
Yeah, they started in July and they should have anticipated these types of things and worked in this type of environment. I mean, you know, these people have been paid pretty good money and this is, there should be no excuse for their bending the rules or not following the rules regarding our ordinances. So I'm hoping that we'll keep their feet to the fire and get this resolved as soon as possible. And if they do violate the next, I think we should order, do the stop order as quickly. One last thing, in terms of the flooding, you know, I keep on harping about the flooding. I talked to Mr. Bizani, a couple of your constituents, and, you know, a couple of weeks ago, the tides were excessively high and the people that were there at the end of that road, you know, were concerned again because they gotta go through salt, about a foot of salt water. So I'm not letting this lie, you know, once we finish the budget, I'm gonna try to jump on this to see what we can do to ameliorate that situation, particularly for those people that on, at the end of Guinea Road. It was pretty bad. So anyway, just to mention that. I am not giving up.
Have you heard anything from the state? They want to enact this law in Virginia legislature to force counties to put in solar. Well, we can't, we can't, you know, push back. Has that been passed?
It was dropped.
It was dropped?
Withdrawn.
It, it will come back next year, but it, it, it's not that it's gonna take us out of that picture. It's, it's different than that. But it will come back next year. But it, it was not as it was presented to us from outside people, not Baco, but other people have tried to tell us that it was gonna take the ability for us to regulate. It's not that, it's just to make it more efficient, but not to take the boards out of those decisions.
And, and remember, you know, we worked diligently to come up with a plan that limited the amount of our areas for solar, so.
That's what they're looking to take out, is the ability to limit by surface area, by zoning district. That's what they're looking to take out. They're not going to circumvent local Board of Supervisors, but they want that conversation to be able to happen.
I got a lot of phone calls over the weekend over the Gloucester Facebook page, I guess April Fool joke about having a tunnel built at the York River. Was that something we posted, was that something we did?
That, that was yesterday. So you probably got a lot of calls yesterday, but yes, it was done by the Public Information Officers, Department of Community Engagement and Public Information. It was something done that if people looked at the drawing or the picture, it's hard for me to believe that people wouldn't realize that it wasn't true. It was April Fools. Radio stations and others have done this. If you hear the results, and I think Mr. Wright can give the quotes better than I can on the statistics, but we ended up having, I think it was like 200 new followers to our page, a lot of positive press as well as criticisms. I think that Mr. Shepherd has handled emails personally and.
Thank you. If you were in the comics yesterday, just about every comic in the daily press had something about April Fools. So anyway, just as a side issue.
Well, I thought it was great. I actually, I actually, one of my employees was adamant that it was real because it was from VDOT. And I actually called Carol, I called Ms. Steele, and I said, will you please tell him? And he still didn't believe it after it was all said and done. And I'm like, you've got to be kidding me. I said, he said, we haven't even just finished building that bridge and we're gonna build another one? Okay. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Couple of things. Thank you, Ms. Steele, to Ms. Steele and JJ for helping me with that email I sent, but I wanted to put out that I am going to be having a conversation on Monday with the Director of Transportation, as well as VDOT is gonna be looped in on that conversation to look at the situation on Warehouse Road. I have been down there and seeing the handicap bus and what is going on there. And the Transportation Director has, has assured me that between the three of us, her office, my conversation with me, and the conversation with VDOT, that that situation is going to be rectified. It is, it is, it is difficult for the driver and the student, but we're gonna work on a solution.
Thank you. Ms. Steele, County Minister.
I have some great statistics to share. The Animal Control Office, with the help of volunteer organization, was able to sponsor spaying and neutering clinic, and they had two vans going, and they had 110 animals fixed that day. And that is a great number because you imagine the offspring that could have come there. So congrats to them and thanks for all the people who helped in bringing animals in. The cleanup day, Clean Gloucester Day was a great success. We had 6,949 pounds of litter collected, 281 and a half volunteer hours, which I will say a number of those were county employees that participated, including myself. It's a lot of fun, and Steve and others. We had 262 bags collected and seven tires, some of the more unusual things, a baby carriage, a 16 by 16 carpet that somebody had thrown out, a porcelain washing tub, a paddle boat. And on my list, I had a license plate which I took to DMV in case somebody was missing it. And, and I know I had a perfectly great watering pitcher, that there was nothing wrong with it. But anyway, it's sad and it's good. It's sad that we have that much trash along our roads. I know in the two hours that we had, we weren't able to finish Burley Road. And I thought it looked great, the part we did, and I came back through and, on Sunday, and it's already got a whole bunch of trash that's been thrown. So just really hope people will stop littering. It's, just doesn't do any good for our community that we love. And speaking of a different kind of waste, the hazardous waste collection that we hold semi-annual will be on Saturday, April 20th, at the Hayes Convenience Center from 9:00 to 3:00. So gather up your chemicals and things that need to be taken and can go that day. And then finally, I want to remind everybody that Saturday and Sunday, this Saturday and Sunday, is the Daffodil Festival. We, the town or the community definitely looks ready, it's beautiful. Saturday, the hours are 9:00 to 5:00, and Sunday will be 12:00 to 5:00. Thank you.
Next item are scheduled presentations, open broadband updates. Guess we'll have Greg Reed.
Yeah, I'm Greg Reed with Open Broadband, Area Supervisor. First off, apologies from Kent, whose family has a medical situation, so he needed to stay in town. And then Alan already had some previous engagements before we knew about the situation with Kent. So they weren't able to attend and understand that video connection is not encouraged. We had hoped to do it that way, but maybe sometime in the future. So update is continuing along with expanding the coverage, not just in the VODI area, but to the lower county as well. We're proceeding along with putting up equipment on the Page Water Tower first, followed by the Gloucester Point Water Tower. We've moved equipment into position. The Page Tower, we already have a Verizon fiber circuit in place, and so that should move relatively quickly. We're hoping, we'd like to see a climb by the end of this month is our hope. We're still waiting to get confirmation from the climbing company that they can get up there, but we've got pretty much all the equipment except for a couple of cables that have to be specially ordered. And then we'll move down to Gloucester Point, much the same down there, shorter distances, that's a shorter tower, so we don't have, the cable length won't be as long, but most of the same equipment will be down there. And we're hoping we'll have some pretty good opportunities for coverage in that area, much with the denser population base there. More people can be reached with the line-of-sight equipment and more people can be reached with the non-line-of-sight equipment, because we plan to have both up on that tower. And accounting's been very helpful on providing access to both of those towers to allow us to put equipment in there. Facilities has been Johnny on the spot, getting the electricians in to get those wired up. So we're good to go on that end as well. Update on the campground tower is more Verizon hurry-up-and-wait. They threw another round of requirements in some, since our last meeting, but even, I believe it was three weeks ago, we got another round of requirements from them. And so we reached out to a third-party contractor to help us facilitate meeting some of those, but it's still a time thing that Verizon puts up there for, I think mostly just to keep personal feeling. I don't think they really want to share the tower space, and so they put up a lot of restraints or a lot of restrictions to make, and hoops you have to jump through.
For example?
I don't pretend to know what all of the technicals are, but there are new requirements for, it's called CD, I don't know if that's a Certificate of Design, you know, that is much like NASA, you've got all these initials that don't always get explained. But some more engineered drawings that were not in the initial requirements. And some of these are strange to me from a little more layman's side, having not, not been the, the technical side that Kent and Company are. These are towers that Verizon built, because the same requirements go on with the tower over at Bethel Peaslee area. These are towers that Verizon built, Verizon owns. They know the structural, they know the, the load requirements and what can happen on these, and yet all of these same reports still have to be done, which take time and investment and such. So that is probably looking more like the beginning of fourth quarter before we're gonna have equipment up on that tower. We're working on those three that we plan to erect. We're trying to get the equipment moved up here. Facilities has said that they have room to store it, because we've had them laying on the ground at the manufacturer's location in Mississippi, I believe, for quite a while, at least since 2022. And so those should be coming up in the next, probably in the next month, I would think, maybe even less time than that. But Facility said they have room to store it, so that's good. And the last thing we ran into recently was at Achilles, the fall requirement for these towers has to be a certain amount of distance that they can fall safely should something happen. And apparently to meet that fall requirement meant shifting, whereas if, if this was the area that the, at Achilles where the Recreation Center is, and we were gonna be someplace over here near the edge of it, because of that fall requirement, it's pushed it back up here near the center of the space, and that's just not palatable to the school. It's really not ideal to us either. We'd like it to be more out of the way if possible. So we're looking to see if there's any way that those fall requirements can be relaxed in any way. If not, we may have to look at an alternate location for that tower. Any questions for anybody?
Yeah, two questions. How many people do you now have? Because I know that was a question we asked before, apparently it was very low numbers. Where are we today in getting people to subscribe to the service? And the second is, I know Mr. Gibson isn't here, but he's asked about, you know, getting in touch with people and never receiving any kind of information about it. So where are we in getting information to the public that would be affected by the broadband?
To your first question, there hasn't been any gain in the Gloucester market. We're still at six in the VODI area and nine, excuse me, nine non-VODI. In the Matthews area, we're at 30 in the VODI area and one non-VODI. For the communication side, we've been working on mailers. We've sent out two rounds of mailers, I believe, in both counties, but mainly to the VODI area at this time, but, because that's where we have equipment currently, so we're trying to entice, or at least continue to let people know that we are out there. But we will increase those mailings as we get equipment up in the Page area, so we would do it in that whole White Marsh zone. And then when we get Gloucester Point up, we will also send out mailers throughout that area as well.
So which tower was gonna be, should be nine months, Landville?
No, we're on Landville. This was one that we wanted to try and increase the coverage with additional equipment for the VODI area. So there's a Verizon, what they call monopole, just a single, oops, sorry, single pole that goes up, not a big wide-span footprint. And it's on 198, near the Thousand Trails Campground entrance. If you remember the old Gloucester Wood Products that used, that used to be in business there on 198, it's on that same property. So it would have coverage over to the Turks Ferry, what is it? I'm sorry.
Is this the one that was gonna be up, end of December?
There was some hope, yeah, until, until Verizon started throwing these.
So we're gonna be roughly nine months after?
And, and that's an estimate. I, I have no confidence that Verizon won't throw more up, because I really think Verizon does not want people to use their towers.
Any more questions, comments?
What next if Verizon says no? Where do we go?
Well, that's a good question. That area was one that we were hoping could pad out or, or sort of give additional support to the VODI area. I don't know that we've identified another one. We could potentially build a tower, but we'd have to find land for it and do the planning and, through the Planning Commission, and the same thing that we've had to do with these other ones. But I don't know that that's something that, that we would engage in until we did an analysis to see how many homes that we could hit and whatnot, because I'm sure unless the county had some additional funding from the grants, that, that would have to be paid for on our, on our dollar, and I don't, we'd have to see the, the number of clients that we think we could hit.
Where are we with the Bethel Church one, up that area where the Verizon tower, we're supposed to be getting permission to, yeah, Bethel Church, near Bethel Elementary School?
Well, same thing. It's, it's in the same stages that we are with the one at Thousand Trails. They've had all those same requirements, it's a Verizon tower as well, so they've had all those same requirements on it as well.
Just add more time.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, it's nothing but frustration all the way around. I mean, it's customers that, that we can't service because we don't have equipment up, but it's customers that are potential customers that are, are sitting back there with no other alternatives. Because a lot of times, even the, the cell alternatives, the hotspots and the MiFi's and whatnot, don't provide either a signal or they have such low data plans that the, you know, we hear stories, this, this is a horrible thing. They say, oh, by, by the 15th of the month, I can't watch any more movies because I'm out of data already. But the same thing applies to if the kids needed to do homework. They'd be out of data and having to buy additional at additional costs, so.
Mr. Crisco?
Is it possible, and this might be county, I don't know, we, we gotta figure out a way to get Verizon to, to play well in the sandbox, because this is ridiculous that we get to a point and then they, they, they change the goal and go, now we need this. And I don't know if that's exactly what's happening, but it sounds to me that Verizon is starting to get in the way. But I, that's what it sounds like, and I don't know, but at this point in time, we can't keep going into the same cycle of delay after delay because Verizon is changing what they require.
Mr. Crisco, thank you, and I'm sorry, I've shaken my head, noted George, I was gonna tell him because he's been out of the day, today, and he didn't, isn't aware, I don't think, of the email that I sent today to Terry Hall. So you all probably recognize Terry Hall's name. He is our communications rep for all of our regional plan, and he knows a lot of the players. I sent a copy of the Verizon information that is actually to KGI, the subcontractor who Verizon's using, and I sent it to Terry and I said, this looks pretty high, and, you know, and is there any, did he have any ideas of what to do? So that's one avenue, and, and not thinking about just open broadband. We are, we, we're at April now. In May, we will find out if the Verizon or the Cox grant request was successful or not. And then if it was not, then there may be other opportunities just to show that we are in such a barren area that maybe the state will look at things differently and, you know, I, I'm not sure, but, because I don't think there, there's no money right now set aside for another tower. But I know the governor wants the whole state air covered, the president wants the whole country covered, you know, we're all working towards that. There's been billions of dollars put towards it, and as answering one of the citizens last night, nobody has been able to move forward with the BEAD grant. It's like 30,000 cases of suits, again, our claims from one company to the next. So the sandbox issue is very significant, especially when they know there's billions of dollars online that their, their company might be able to get. So we're gonna keep trying every which way we can, but I'm hoping Terry may know somebody and he can kindly strong-arm them to say, to, to play nicer to Gloucester.
He doesn't know, they probably don't exist.
Probably true.
Are they, are they required to play nice with Gloucester County?
Our ordinance requires for the towers to allow others to be on them. That is, you can't put a tower in the county without allowing that. Now, there, the site may already be sold, it may not work, et cetera, but that is one of the requirements, because we didn't want to have the whole county littered with extra towers that weren't necessary.
The towers, the towers that we had, that wouldn't work because of the trees? Or is that ever lost to us, or we can't use the towers? The signals that we couldn't get because of the trees?
I think you might be referring to the original equipment that we had for what's called non-line-of-sight coverage. called non-line-of-site, uh, coverage, and we had that equipment on the tower at the, the tower at the landfill, as well as the tower at, um, James Store. Uh, that was equipment made by Nokia, big name international company, supposed to be, you know, best stuff that was out there. It just had no coverage at all, and, and it would lock up on a regular basis. I had one customer who, uh, was having to restart her system ten times a day just to be unhappy, because it still was locking up, even though she was having to restart it that many times. Um, and so that equipment was taken down and replaced with another manufacturer called Tirana, and we put that up at the end of September this past year, and that's what everybody, uh, non-line-of-site is connected to at this point.
Is working?
Works much better, but it's not perfect. It doesn't hit everybody, you know, we would love to be able to put one system up and it just cover everything, but everything does have limitations, and in particular, the, the area that is the Voddy area up in the, the Petsworth district is very, very dense in, in trees on lots, because, let's face it, people moved up there because they wanted privacy. You know, there, a lot of these people are on five to twenty-five, even more acre lots, and they're in the middle of them, and there's a lot of trees to go through. Um, there's one road off of Salem Church called Honey Pot. Well, I, you know, yeah, I think your son lives on Honey Pot. The first house on Honey Pot, I have a client, we got him a decent signal, and she was desperate for it for her kids. I can't get the next house on Honey Pot, and indeed, somebody said, well, why don't you try beaming another signal from the first house to the second? Well, it's four hundred and fifty feet of woods between the two of them, and nothing penetrates that. And those are the, the issues we face with some of these relay points, is trying to find some way to relay. It's, it's, it's very difficult.
I think Mr. Smith's question was, who's paying for the equipment for, I don't know, but...
Oh, that was, that was us.
That's good.
Yeah. Now, we didn't, we didn't have any additional charges against the grant for what we put back up. We're hoping that Nokia was gonna buy the equipment back, but we haven't had any luck on that either.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, citizen comment period. If you'd like to come forward, state your name, magisterial district.
My name is Joseph Dugan. I'm a resident of Gloucester County. I live at nineteen eighty-three Sayers Creek Woods Road in Hayes. I am the road captain for the American Legion Riders Chapter Seventy-Five, and I am the adjutant for the post. And I would like to provide my handouts. You, uh, may or may not be aware of that, uh, cover letter. It was mailed out roughly the sixth or seventh, uh, of March, which would have missed your last meeting, but I don't know if the supervisors have seen that letter or the county has discussed that letter, but, uh, I am here to talk to that letter, to provide more information that would logically go on a single page. I'm here to talk about the poker run request for donations letter that was sent to the Board of Supervisors, give or take March. Again, I do not know if you've seen it, you've discussed it, uh, or whatnot, but I'm here to talk about more specifics that are not in that cover letter. Under our new leadership, we have a new commander, Dr. David Workman, and under the leadership of the Riders Director Marvin Van Buskirk, the American Legion Post and Riders Chapter Seventy-Five has begun to expand our focus in the county, and we've expanded that focus beyond the county based on their request for our support. We have expanded our support beyond veterans and veteran's families into the community and the community families. Let's start with the school and student involvement we are currently working through. We're very proud to say that we now have ten juniors in Gloucester High School who have passed muster for Boy State. We normally get five if we're lucky, but we have ten who we interviewed, we've looked at their applications, we've got comment from the school, and we've got ten boys that we're looking at trying to fund. Beyond that, we've got sixteen girls who passed muster for Girl State. That's amazing, sixteen girls. We also now have nine law enforcement cadets who have passed muster that the Legion, it's one of the Legion programs that we support, and it's supported all through donations. We are not like other, uh, Gloucester schools, uh, Gloucester Post, uh, uh, American Legion Posts who have big rooms with bars and diners and gaming devices. We don't have that. We rely on what the community will allow us to perform. We have an oratorical program, which recently, uh, Evangeline Stafford went through two layers of that. She didn't make it to state, but she did a good job, she presented herself well. Our oratorical program, like our Boy State, Girl State law enforcement, is law, government, and constitutional based, where under the oratorical program, she took on the Second Amendment and did a darn good job. Her view of it, that was discussed. We've already begun, uh, moving into other support areas within the community. We've done a trunk-or-treat. We just finished our Easter egg hunt. Uh, we've had parents come to us and ask us, well, you know, what else can you do? I mean, it's something a lot of people do, uh, ask us what we can do because of, I guess, the way we do it, I don't know. But we are now having, looking to having movie nights for community kids. You come in, bring your favorite blanket and your pillow, and we'll run a movie for you. We'll have the, the parents will be there, uh, we'll have refreshments for the kids. Uh, we're looking at having a skills camp, baseball, football throwing, uh, cornhole, crafts. They can do crafts with us, learn crafts with us.
Sir, your three minutes is up. Could you summarize, please?
Oh, the bottom line is, we are, uh, we're run basically off of contributions from anywhere, and we solicited through the government's, uh, letters and to businesses, and we look forward to hopefully, uh, a contribution from Gloucester County, if you see fit. Thank you, I did those three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Would anyone else like to speak? Ms. Cronin? Do we have any emails or phone?
No, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else like to speak? All right. We'll move to, there's no Paul Kirans, we'll move to the regular agenda. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a permanent pump and haul agreement between Gloucester County and FGC Severn River Investors. Mr. Baines?
Does he get three minutes?
He gets two and a half.
Yeah. Uh, good evening, yeah, Chairman and members of the board. Uh, we're here tonight to try to...
What's your magisterial district, sir?
We're, we're here tonight to try to, uh, uh, support one of our, our local campgrounds in, uh, doing it. Uh, we, uh, have to have certain things happen, so, uh, the Cardinal RV has, uh, had issues. They've got multiple septic tanks down there, and with the multiple septic tanks, they're, uh, working with the Health Department, and they're going under consent order. Well, to do it, they've got to develop new septic systems, but their permit runs out in August. So for them to be able to do all this, they need a, uh, a permanent pump and haul to be able to take care of their sewage while the camp grounds open, while they get this new system approved by the Health Department. As you know, uh, Mr. Wilmot was able to help us get a agreement with the Health Department that we have to have in place, so that the county actually has a agreement with the Health Department to do pump and haul. Part of those requirements is we have to have a memorandum of understanding with the actual owner of the property that has to do the pump and haul. And tonight, we're actually providing you all that information. It starts with the letter from Miss Legg that says, right now, because they're going under the consent order, there's no other way for them to actually be able to get rid of their sewage other than a pump and haul. Then you'll see in there, the resolution for, for the board to, uh, look at tonight and decide if they want to approve or not, and behind that, it has the new agreement that y'all see that is basically, uh, the agreement that they'll sign. The differences between the one that was in your packet and this one is, they've got multiple septic tanks out there, and they're of different sizes, so we're trying to be more general in that sizes are from five hundred up to over a thousand, and they'll pump at least, I think, once a week during the, uh, on season until they get it done. The tax spent numbers you see, it's a very large, uh, uh, camp down there, so it's on multiple parcels, so we've included all the parcels that are in there. Mr. Wilmot has looked at the, uh, memorandum of, uh, well, the pump and haul agreement, and he's, uh, agreed that it's, uh, good in form, and that as long as we get down the proper number of tanks and such, that we ought to be able, uh, to do this. So in your packet, there's a resolution to, uh, allow us to do all this on page forty-two of your packet, uh, and I'm here for any questions.
Mr. Crisco.
You're being way too nice to the Health Department on how they've handled this whole thing.
Anytime, yes, sir.
And I just want to make it aware that this is not the county, this is the Health Department that has messed this up for these folks, and luckily, the Health Department finally got out of their way and said, hey, we can do this, because it's in the state ordinance, and this is what we can do, and I, my hat's off to, to, to yourself and to Katie, uh, Miss Legg, for, for getting this to us this quickly, because the, these folks are, you know, they're an employer for this county, and they, they, they do bring economic development and, and, and prove our economy when they're open in the summer months.
I move you to approve a resolution?
Page forty-two, okay.
Yeah, on page forty-two.
Ms. Steel, what do you call the role?
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosje?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you. And now that you've done that, we'll work with Mr. Wilmot to actually get the, uh, pump and haul, uh, to them and get it signed. Thank you also very much.
Thank you. Next item is a resolution of support for the Virginia Housing Community Impact Grant Innovation Program Grant Application. Ms. Steel.
Yes, thank you. Um, the board may recall that we've talked about, uh, and I know Mr. Hedrick would remember this, because this was one of the areas that he was very concerned about, so we have a number of uninhabitable, um, derelict-type homes, uh, some are abandoned, uh, throughout the county. And so this proposed grant, um, project would help remove five of them by rehabbing them and making them into affordable housing. So there would be a benefit that the conditions in the county would be improved, and that we would have five new homes that are more affordable, and also, uh, through the grant, would be specifically targeted in a hometown heroes program, that the people who could purchase them would meet, have to meet the grant qualifications, um, financially, and they would have to have been employed for a year, and they have to be employed in Gloucester County, and they would be in a field such as education, or law enforcement, or in, uh, the medical field, and, um, and first responders. And so we're, we're working on getting the grant application together, so it can go through finance and through the county attorney, and as well as an MOU or an MOA with the rural housing partnership. Well, I would say we're eighty, eighty-five percent, uh, finished with, uh, the grant application. We've got a few things that we're still trying to, uh, speak to the state about. This is the first time that the county will ever have been involved in one like this, particularly like this, and it's a, a, a big, um, nice move up for the housing partnership that is normally doing smaller-type, uh, renovation projects and not working with the sales, too. We've gotten, uh, letters of support from Congressman Whitman, from, uh, the school system, um, from NAACP, uh, a number of others that would go along with the application. So at this point, the, um, request is to pass a resolution on page fifty-three that would allow the county to move forward with the application, because, um, you all will not meet again before the application is due. So it's similar to the VMRC program, we still have to meet all the requirements. If there's any hold, holdup with the county attorney, it will not go forward.
Mr. Bizani.
So I was just wondering, do they have any kind of bylaws that help, or policies that help them decide which, which properties will be renovated? And does it benefit the property owner in some way? That he can turn around and sell it now because it's probably more valuable?
No, uh, the, the acquisition would occur first, so if there is any benefit to the person who owns it, then, um, it would happen at the beginning, but the first thing is to, uh, try and look for people who are, would take a tax write-off.
Do they have any kind of written policy on how they choose properties?
Um, the properties, we provided information on sites through the assessor's office, and they have already sent out a contractor to look and see, first of all, can they be salvaged? Because, um, they need to be in the, the proper state that they can be, um, fixed, but also, there's some that you might have a house that's dilapidated and it's on a hundred acres. Well, that's not gonna be, so they looked at the acreage, they looked at the conditions of the home, and, um, they've also looked for those who are, um, have not paid their taxes.
But again, do they have a policy that guides them?
So there is no, no, this is the first time, so what they're looking for is the most feasible, and the way that the, the grant is written, and the grant is not required for the homes to be, uh, acquired before applying. It's, they have five selected, they're the first five they want to go after. They may not be able to get those five, they may get four, they may get three, and then they keep on going. We have, uh, over two hundred homes in this category.
Should they have a policy to guide them as to which properties to pick? If they don't have one now?
Well, the policy probably would be good to put in writing, but it really has to do with, um, much of the, the sort of common sense criteria of the size of the lot, again, the, the type of the home, whether it can be renovated, but I think putting those things down on paper would be, uh, a good thing to do, and I appreciate the suggestion.
And my last question, who audits the, um, the grant as it comes in? Who does the oversight?
Um, Ms. Callaway does, or one of her staff does all the auditing for all of our grants.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dr. Orth.
Yeah, following up on Mr. Bizani, um, so will there be a contractor, or will there be someone from our department that goes to look and see about the feasibility of renovating houses, uh, because you've got to improve the well and a septic system, too, on top of that, because if they're old, you know, renovating or putting a new septic system is very expensive today.
Absolutely.
And it's particularly low areas where they may not be able to have a new septic system.
Right, and those would be the homes that would be knocked out. They have a Class A contractor who's already looked at the first five that they'd like to go after, uh, and again, there's others if they can't, but there, the hope is to get these properties, again, donated to the, uh, rural housing partnership, um, and if not, for the lowest cost possible, because this is a charitable program, and it's trying to help, you know, people get a first-time home, and so all of those things, again, that criteria, they will be looking, but, uh, it's not a county employee, it is their contractor. And then they would also, um, uh, hire the contractors, and that would be part of the MOA, that it's their responsibility, um, to hire qualified contractors or subcontractors. And they also, the grant includes the hiring of a project manager who would be doing, who is a real estate background person, who would be doing negotiations and things for the properties.
Are any of these properties in areas that would be considered flooded? Because, again, you know, that was a problem we had with some of our grants about raising houses, some of which were so old that they probably should have never been raised.
Not the ones that have been identified now. I'm not saying that there, again, aren't more, but having looked at those, and I'm not trying to be coy, but I think we want, we don't, we want to have these people approached, if the grant is applied for and received, to be approached under the right circumstances where they might realize the benefits of making that donation and things, and not thinking, oh, somebody wants my house, I'm just gonna raise the price on it.
So have the owners turned rights to their property over to the housing authority?
They have not been approached yet. We don't know if this grant is gonna be funded, so it would be at the time that the grant gets funded that they would be approached.
One of them might say, I want $200,000 of money.
And then, you go there off the list.
Just cut them off.
Right. And I tell you that part of the grant task that's on there is to look up and learn, for the group, to look up and learn more about and hopefully have even a speaker come down from the Richmond Land Trust, which I mentioned in an earlier email, I believe, that I think would be very helpful. And what those communities do, they get so successful at flipping these houses that any, that the cities, the city of Richmond, Chesterfield County, and Henrico County take the properties that normally go to auction and instead of, there's a revenue loss for the localities because they don't get, as Mr. Wilmot's been able to obtain, if the land, if the money sits there for two years after all the bills and things, and that fund, those funds come back. But, they go ahead and give those properties to the land trust who then, because they've really established a working relationship and they're doing and flipping properties and houses and have done quite well. I don't see anything like that happening for, you know, some time here, even if it happens at all, but it's interesting to see how other land trusts have worked to try and get rid of blight at the same time as create more affordable housing.
Dr. Orff?
How much is the grant and are there going to be matching costs?
There are no matching costs for the county. Rural Housing Partnership is providing matching end-kind, but it's not required. And the application is for $200,000.
$200,000 per home?
No. It's $200,000. That's why we're looking for donations. That would be for fixing them. And it is a...
So, my concern is the Royal Housing Partnership has sent people out to private property, is what I'm understanding. And if it was my private property that they went out on and I had an old piece of property with an old house on it and then they, and after April 15th, someone calls me, goes, hey, by the way, I was out on your property. I'm going to say, why were you there? I don't, I don't, it sounds great, $200,000, affordable house? You're not getting an affordable house, you're not building a house in Gloucester County or anywhere in Virginia currently for probably $200,000 that is going to increase. It sounds good in theory, but this project with what we're hearing about tonight is not going to be a feasible, winnable thing for us in this locality.
Plus, they don't have a policy in place, written policy to adjudicate which property gets repaired or become affordable. You come up to me, like Mr. Crisco said, I have a piece of property, let's say, in Guinea, and, you know, now this is public because now the public knows that the county's going to get $200,000. And, hey, I represent the housing authority, we're interested in you donating the house, so sure, I'll donate to you for $200,000.
That's not a donation. They're a 501(c)(3) and they work as a nonprofit and they have since, like, 1990s as a very successful group and community. This is a stretch for them. The $200,000 minus the amount for the part-time project manager is for the repair work to the homes. So, I do agree that trying to repair, not build, but trying to repair five homes for a couple hundred thousand dollars is hard, but they also have their normal program where they have donations, they use the restore for supplies, they have volunteers that, you know, are willing to help and have helped in many of the repair projects. They can stretch the dollar. I asked the state about what happens if, worst-case situation, that you can't do enough. It's five is the goal. It may not be five homes. That's the goal to shoot for. I also talked with their executive director about my, and explained our policy and my concern that we do not go on anybody's property that is posted, even when, I said, if they're applying for a permit or anything and we need to look and I, even for law enforcement, we do not go on if they're posted. And she explained that none of the sites were posted. I did not think, you know, nobody went in the houses. It's been a cursory, again, we have over 200 homes in this category. So, these were the five that they looked at based on the Excel spreadsheet, first of all, looking at that and looking at what the size of the lot was, what the value of the home was, and then going out and looking and see. It's not going to be easy. It's, you know, there's a lot of other grants that I've worked on that have been easier than this, but I think, to me, it's worth dipping our toe in the water and trying.
So, it would be a little, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bizani?
So, it would be a little different if the homeowner, the owner of the property would say, yeah, I'd like my house renovated, I can't afford to fix it. But, you're saying this authority is looking for people to donate property to...
For hometown heroes is what the program's called.
And of the five homes, you don't have any donations for those five homes here?
We have not approached anybody because you don't have a grant.
But, let's say we have, let's assume we have the grant. So, then you're going to approach these property owners, say, would you be willing to donate? And do they get a tax benefit for donating the property?
Yes, they would. And some of them, it might be that they could be obtained, dependent upon how far behind they are in their taxes. So, it's, it's not easy, but I commend Rural Housing Partnership for trying to make this happen. Otherwise, they're just going to continue to sit dilapidated and not be used.
I totally agree with that. To just sit there and be dilapidated and then the county have to pay to have them torn down and...
And just rot.
And they just rot, you know, and just, then we've got to clean it up. And I understand what the $200,000 because they do have other people that are, you know, that are donating their time and their money to get these houses renovated. So, the $200,000, I mean, that's not going to be for five homes. I mean, that's understandable, you can't, one home probably, but without the donation, so they'll have donations, so it won't, you know, it'll just be, so it's like a startup cost. And I really, I think it's going to be a good thing for us.
That's exactly right. And if no one wants to donate, then that's it.
But, you have people that are donating their time, is what I'm saying.
Right.
The Housing Partnership, there are people that do a lot of stuff now. I know people that have done stuff for, where they have contractors come out and, you know, they build decks and ramps and all kinds of things. And it's a good program. I think it's something we should at least give a try.
Dr. Orff?
Yeah. I think our resolution basically states that in terms of, there's a dire need for affordable housing. You know, we have a lot of people in our workforce that are named in this resolution that would be able to partake of a program like that if we can fix it. I understand the concerns that Ms. Bizani, Mr. Crisco has, but I think it's worth a chance to put in this grant to see what we can do with this money to get some of these dilapidated houses on the tax roll and to help the people that are mentioned, you know, the teachers, first responders, medical staff, who make very little. And I think personally, it's a, I would support it.
Hold on, please. Mrs. Crisco?
I'm not saying that I don't think this is a good idea. My issue is, things have already occurred on private property that should not have occurred because the Housing Partnership is looking at, how do we spend this money without figuring out the logistics of getting to these people? No one from any organization should have set foot on anybody's private property, whether it's posted or not. That's my concern. My other concern is $200,000, and gentlemen, I'm sorry, $200,000, if we can renovate one or two houses with that amount of cash, it would be a miracle. That's less than 2% of what we have in this county that we deem as dilapidated. Again, we are, this is akin to why we no longer just buy properties in the floodplain. This is someone else getting into the real estate business, whether it's six months or a year. This comes off the tax roll for however long it takes to renovate and that's something that this board in the past has said they didn't want to take part in. I don't have a problem in theory with what's going on, but the process to where we've gotten to tonight has been handled improperly by the Housing Partnership. And if they were to contact me, I would press charges for trespassing.
But, Mrs. Crisco, how do we know how they handle it? We don't know how they want to be doing it.
I'm going by the information that was given to me tonight, Mr. Smith. That's the information.
But, who gave you that information?
Ms. Steele.
Ms. Steele, Ms. Steele said they trespassed on somebody's property. Did you say that?
I told them that they cannot trespass and, and we do not go on anybody's property that is not posted. We've gone on people's property for delivering flyers to all kinds of things if it's not posted. So, I don't feel like it's fair, knowing the individual who went and made these inspections, I think it would be more fair to allow him to speak up because I don't want to be misstating of what he has or hasn't done because, again, the information on these started by looking at the homes that qualified, that were on this list, that were determined by the assessors of whether they're in very poor condition, uninhabited, et cetera. So, this, like I said, this is difficult and it's not ideal, but I think it's a start.
I'm sure when you look at homes that are dilapidated and the county decides, okay, we need to tear this home down, I'm sure they didn't stand in the road and says, we need to tear that house down. I'm sure somebody walked on that property and looked around.
I know, I personally have been on personal property for a number of times.
And I'm glad you didn't get arrested.
Well, and, and I, and if somebody has come, I've gone up, knocked on doors, I've done all kinds of things, but if there's no one there, and I do not believe that he went to anybody's home where somebody was there. These, again, most of these are uninhabited.
Exactly.
But, whichever way, Mr. Crisco, I don't want to be misleading because I wasn't the person who was there, so, you know...
No, I'm not, I'm not. You didn't mislead me.
I may have stated it stronger.
No, you didn't mislead me. It's just a concern that I have that, you know, we're getting to where it's time to make a decision on do we want to proceed with this grant and I don't have enough information to know how we got to where we are because I don't feel comfortable with someone, not with the county, not with anybody that anybody necessarily, I mean, I'm sure someone in the county knows, but the whole thing where there's been an investigation to five properties to gauge the, what's the proper word?
Feasibility?
The feasibility or, you know, whatever you want to call it, for these houses to qualify. I have some concerns with that, to find out, you know, tonight before it actually happened.
Mr. Bizani?
So, this, the project manager's an independent individual who is not associated with the housing authority?
This would be an employee of, like, they would have a project manager, just like if we manage grants, sometimes we hire a project manager.
Are they going to be paid for that position?
That's part of the grant, yes.
So, the grant's really, how much of the grant is going to be actually used for repairs as opposed to paying someone's salary for a couple of years?
The proposed salary and whatever benefits would be associated, because it might be a contract, I'm not sure how that negotiation will occur, is, I believe, $34,000.
Okay. So, the grant of $200,000 includes $34,000?
Right.
So, we'd only be looking at $100 and...
You won't get much money left to fix any homes.
And I can tell you, if the grant allowed more money, we would apply for more money. And I think that what happens with this organ, you know, it appears to be that success adds to more success. So, I think if the group does well, they'll get another one. And it may be that we only get one house done and we go back to them.
I would...
But, there is no way that there were ever going to be more than five, so five was the starting number. And, you know, maybe this is one of the things that, when I, I'm waiting for the gentleman to call me back because I'm looking out for the liability of the county on this and, you know, I want to make sure if the worst-case thing happens, you know, and that's what I said, worst-case, if this fails, what, you know, what's the responsibility? And it may be that we need to lower that number to three, you know, I don't know. And even if it's only one home, it's not going to make a dent, but it's going to make a dent in our taxes, but it's going to make a dent to the individual living in there. And I think it's great for the, you know, the, I think the hometown heroes program hopefully will receive additional donations and things for people who want to help a first-time, you know, law enforcement or teacher or somebody in the medical profession, et cetera, to be able to have their own home.
I would suggest, gentlemen, that we accept the grant money but not disperse it until they come up with a policy and written policy on how they're going to spend this money so that we have accountability, just in case there is a liability. I mean, if this thing goes to court and, you know, the court asks, you know, hey, authority, do you have a policy on how these homes were chosen? No, we don't. It's just, we just did our thing and we just picked these houses. We're left exposed after that, right? There's no liability protection on the county side.
I'm not sure what you think the liability would be, is that somebody might be mad that their house didn't get selected.
A property owner could sue and say, why didn't you pick, I was, you know, why didn't you pick my property, you know? As opposed to this other property.
Because I think with what they're looking at, and I'm like, I'm using this term loosely, but they're kind of modeling after what the PAA does. People donate property to the PAA for the tax benefit. They're not getting any benefit out of the property. So, they're looking at properties that potentially somebody would donate to the partnership and then they have the, I guess, the bones of the building. And that way, they would remodel it. That's what I'm envisioning. That would be the donation. So, the only way somebody would come back is if they wanted to donate it and they didn't want to accept it.
Right. And that they could do, that could happen, it's going to happen to the PAA where somebody wants to give a problem away.
Mr. Crisco?
But, my concern again lies with the fact that instead of a communication going out to these five people going, hey, we're going to be looking at pursuing a grant, would it be okay for us to send someone out to see if your property might qualify to be a grant participant and notify these people? And I'm sure some of these people, we've tried to notify for other reasons and probably haven't heard from them in a decade. Again, though, I don't like how it has been explained and I don't know if it's explained perfectly or not, but those people should have been notified before any third party set foot on their property because it's their property, not ours, not the Housing Partnership's, not anybody else's but the person that, his name is assigned to the deed.
So, I think approved, that would be accepted. I'm sorry. Mr. Chair?
Hold on.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Orff.
When's the application due?
April 15.
April 15.
Okay, so that's right, so you're pressing for time.
And we, absolutely, we don't know whether we will get the grant, but you all will have to accept the grant if it is awarded. So, that would have to come back to the board and if at that point it wasn't satisfactory, you would have another chance to, you know, weigh in on it.
That's why I say we accept, if we win the grant, we accept the money.
It's not even that, we're not even to that point yet.
Okay. So, there needs to be a, to me, there needs to be a written policy on how these, how these properties are adjudicated, which one gets picked so that there's not a, you know, there's not a kind of favoritism going on or a specific property being, you know, donated in some way. It has to be an upfront policy because there's, you know, it's money involved and I'm sorry, we're all human beings.
Well, I think it's basically, we need a donations policy from them that if people, because that's what you're looking for.
Something, something.
And I think it'd be very similar to the PAA.
They don't have any policy.
We can probably ask for a copy of theirs to give to the Rural Housing.
I talked to one of the members, they don't have a policy.
So, you know they don't have any policy?
I don't know. For actual house, an entire house to be donated to them, I don't know if they do. But, again, the PAA probably has some structure or, again, contacting Richmond or something like that, another group to say, here's the policy and have them review and they have a lawyer, so, and having them, you know, review and make sure it's a solid policy. Because we are not going to, the county's not going to own the home. And so, like it was mentioned about the taxes, those taxes would have to be brought up in that transfer to occur and they would have to be maintained to the county. They're not going to be tax-exempt, but the home isn't, without coming back and going through the board, so they'd be paying taxes on the time that they own the property.
We're not the only locality that has ever done the hometown hero.
No. As I said, Richmond has a similar program. I just don't think they designate the types of employees and this is one of the ways of sort of helping a specific group because there are so many needy, or not needy, but people who would like to have the opportunity to get their own home.
Right.
Why don't we just vote on the resolution?
Make a motion.
I vote second.
Resolution authorizes the county administrator to accept the grant.
Yes.
No, no, no.
It's to apply.
No, to apply.
Okay. Well, we can modify that.
Just to apply.
I don't want the board feeling that they're being pushed into something at all.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Gloucester Board Supervisor supports the submission of a grant application to the Virginia Housing Community Impact Grant Innovation Program for funding to improve workforce housing ability, availability in Gloucester and authorizes the county administrator to extrate acceptance of an award resulting from...
So, I would suggest that the board strike that so that there's no confusion over that, the last part.
Okay.
Okay.
So, let me just make sure...
So, period on Gloucester?
I want to, I want to make sure.
Strike out the rest of the sentence.
Gloucester County is, supports the submission of a... Gloucester County was, supports the submission of a grant application period, right there. Yes, and then start from, and authorizes to strike all that.
Okay. So you make the motion on page 53 as amended.
As amended.
I don't know, Trish.
I didn't even know.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Steele, will you pull the board?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
No.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Dr. Orf?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and decision on a joint meeting request from the Planning Commission. Mr. Baines.
Glad to see you all again tonight. This, uh, right now, as you know, we've been working for multiple years on our zoning ordinance. Uh, after the last joint meeting we had, the Planning Commission had gone through the last sections that they wanted to. And they feel that they were close to the point where they would like to go for a public hearing later this summer. To do that, they'd like to have one more joint meeting to make sure everybody's on the same page. And they've recommended that joint meeting be their meeting of May 2nd. That's a Thursday, if that works. If it doesn't work, then they're willing to work with you all on a doodle poll to find out when everybody could meet.
It's a Thursday night?
It's a, it's their normal Thursday nights, have our Tuesday.
And our Tuesday the following week.
Yeah, because this is on the second, yeah, we, our meeting won't be until the Tuesday after that.
Gentlemen?
The second works for me, but it, if we're going to, it's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
If it's not going to work for a board member, we should probably do the doodle poll so we can try to get
As many as possible.
As many as possible there.
It's at 6:30.
I can make any day.
Okay.
I'll be about that night.
Got you.
There you go.
All right. That's what he's going to do, a doodle poll.
Yes, sir, I was, as long as that, and that, um, I was going to say, yeah, thank you. And, and again, you know, um, uh, I'm up here because, uh, Ann's not. So I, I get to do all these tonight, including, I see that Mr. Reed has left, but you know, we supported, Eric had supported getting the information to them in the different towers we've looked at. So we've been out actively trying to help them get their job done.
Well, while we're sitting here, what about potentially June 6th?
What's the, what's the Thursday night after our board meeting in May? Would that work?
I was just thinking, they're, they're meeting on June 6th already.
They're meeting on June 6th already.
The seven of us can make that work. I know I can't.
Got you, so that, that's June 6th?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm here.
I'm here.
What about Mr. Bottat?
He said he was. So the only one we don't have is Mr. Gibson, but the rest of y'all, I'm getting a head nod, the 6th would work.
I'm looking to double check with him when he gets back.
Yep. Does that work?
Let's potentially
Yeah, if, if that date, if that works for Mr. Gibson, we'll let you all know if it does, and then we'll send out a doodle poll. Okay?
Okay.
Does that work for you, Trish? Okay. Because you're the ones that got to do it all the work, I'm just the one talking. There you go, thank you.
Okay. Next item was board appointments. We have one for the Wetlands Board.
Yes, and, um, I've had some, and I know Mr. Gibson sent us all an email, but I've had the opportunity to speak with Mr. White several times in the past. And, uh, I will gladly make that nomination on Mr. Gibson's behalf for Mr. Lee White to be appointed to the Wetlands Board.
Okay. And we'll hold off on the, um, historical committee. So all in favor of Mr. White for Wetlands Board?
Aye.
That's fine. Mr. Wilmot? That's what I like to hear. Uh, board and commission reports? Supervisor discussion? All right, one last item. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.